Good evening, everyone, and welcome to the Candidates Forum presented and produced by the League of Women Voters of Northwest Wayne County. This Candidates Forum is for the Van Buren School Board and is being recorded on September 30th, 2020. My name is Paula Bowman, and I'm the President of the League of Women Voters of Northwest Wayne County, and also the moderator of tonight's forum. Van Buren School District serves the townships of Van Buren and Sumter, the city of Belleville, and small sections of Canton and Washtenaw County. The Board of Education consists of seven members who each serve four-year terms. Voters will choose four members of the Board at this November's election. There are five candidates running: Kelly Owen, Terrence Goff, Deion Falconer, Simone Pinter, and Susan Feathering Gill. Four of the candidates are participating in the forum tonight. We're sorry that Kelly Owen is not here. The League of Women Voters is a nonpartisan political organization. We never support or oppose any candidate or political party. The League does take positions on issues after careful study, so sometimes you'll see our name attached to an issue that we are supporting or opposing. The League of Women Voters is where hands-on work to safeguard democracy leads to civic improvement. Membership is open to all persons who are 16 years of age or older, and you can join through our website, lwnorthwestwayne.org. The League's main mission is to promote political responsibility through informed and active participation in government. One of the ways we do that is by having forums such as this one tonight. The League has also prepared a nonpartisan voter guide, which can be found online at Print copies of the voter guide will be available at the Belleville Library either Friday afternoon, Saturday, or Monday, but Monday at the latest. Holding a Candidates Forum by Zoom poses challenges different from an in-person forum. Only League personnel and the candidates are present at the forum, but we did solicit questions from the public in advance so that we could ask them at tonight's forum. Some of those questions are on our list. Questions were screened for clarity, and any which included personal attacks on a candidate were, of course, eliminated. The views expressed in this forum are those of the candidates and not the League of Women Voters. And now, we're going to get started with our forum. The candidates have agreed to a format for tonight's forum, which is as follows: a one-minute response to all the questions, and a two-minute closing statement. The order that the candidates speak was determined by a random selection process witnessed by the candidates before the recording of the forum began. We will rotate the order of the candidate who responds to a question first. League member Val Nelson is our timer tonight. She will be holding up cards so that the candidates know when their time is up. The candidate must stop when the stop sign appears. So now, we're going to start our forum, and Ms. Pinter, we're going to start your opening statement, which is one minute. Please go ahead.
Hi, I'm Simone Pinter. I have been on the school board for the last four years, trying to get things into the right direction, and I think we've done pretty good. But I have three children that are all from Belleville Schools, and I have two grandchildren who are in Belleville Schools. Well, one's going to be soon. But, you know, I've lived here since 1981. We have businesses here. I just think that it's a great place to be.
Thank you. Mr. Goff, your opening statement, please.
Hi, my name is Terrence Goff. I'm a married father of three. I've been in Belleville now for three years, and I love this community. I have previous experience on the school board. I was in a charter school board for three years in another school district, so I'm pretty experienced with that on school boards. I love this community, like I said, and I'm looking forward to just trying to help the kids of this community go forward and have the best footing they can. And I feel you can only do that if you get involved and getting involved in a school board.
Thank you. Ms. Feathering Gill?
Hi, good evening. I'm Susan Feathering Gill, and I am currently on the Board and serving in my fourth year. And with five grandchildren currently attending Van Buren Schools, I want to continue to make sure that they receive the best possible education experiences. And as a retiree and current School Board Vice President, I wanted to be able to continue to give back to the community with this important position on continuing on the school board, utilizing those 30 years of school district work experience. And I also want to continue to work on the school district bond issue, to use the funds that the community approved to the most effective and efficient way possible. So, thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Falconer, your opening statement?
My name is Deion Falconer. I am a wife. I've been a wife for 18 years, and I'm a mother of two students in the Van Buren Township School District. We have been living here for eight years. We moved out here right before our oldest son went into the school system. We chose this location because it gave me that village feeling, very inviting. Once they entered into school, I felt it was very important for me to be a part of the school because my parents have always been a part of the school. I'm very active in the PTO at Tyler. My oldest son just went over to Owen, to last year, so it is important for me to make sure that our kids get what they need. I have implemented raising money just for our PTO so that we can provide for our children as they need, regardless to whatever their poverty level might be. Because they're in poverty, we aren't.
Thank you. Thank you. Ms. Pinter will start this first question with you. What is motivating you to run for the school board? Do you have an issue that you especially care about?
Yes, I, you know, I've said for many years, a friend once told me, "If you don't stay involved in your community, you have no right to complain about it." We hear of a lot of complaining, especially now with COVID, so the only way that you can stop that is to stay involved and keep it going in the right direction, which I think in the last few years, we've been working very hard at putting in the right direction. So, I think that that is something we need to just keep working at.
Thank you. Mr. Goff?
Yes, well, I have three children that are in the school district, so vested as far as that's concerned. But also, what's important to me is equitable payout. I'm trying to work with the school board so we can work with the state government to find out why aren't each school's, the school systems paid out equally inequitably? Why would a school system next to another school system be paying, you know, $3,000 and $4,000 per child different amounts? Why? That isn't fair, and I would like to be involved with our school district to find out. Can we get more money so we can have more, you know, opportunities to attract better teachers and to have more programming and better programming, things like that?
Thank you. Ms. Feathering Gill?
Yes, and I guess what's motivating me is to make sure that we are moving on that right direction. And as Ms. Pinter mentioned about the safety with COVID, just putting all of those procedures in place. One of the things that we did, giving parents the opportunity to be either in-person or remote learning option, I think that that was a good plan, and it gives each family that opportunity to be able to do that. So, just continuing with those kind of safety, finance, making sure that all the money is spent appropriately, and then communicating all those issues with our community, our staff, and parents.
Thank you. Ms. Falconer?
Well, we know that as a community, if we raise our children correctly and give them the education they need, they're going to produce or provide the assets that we need. We are all aging, and they will be the ones taking over our community and running things. Without a good education, how would they do that? We want a great education for everyone, regardless to whether they are a unique learner, a GT learner, or just a regular learner. Everyone isn't made to go to college, but we want to be able to provide our students with the education and the desire that they need to be a successful citizen in the United States, and then be able to give back to our community so that Van Buren Township and Belleville can be the best on the map.
Thank you. Mr. Goff, you'll be the first one to answer this next question. Where do you or will you get your sources of information on which to base your decisions on COVID-19 policies?
Okay, obviously, I'll look to the CDC first and foremost to find out what they're talking about as far as their policies. Next would be the state. I look at their guidance as well. And also, the school district. Mr. Kulek has a very good handle on what's going on as far as COVID is concerned, all the protocols and protections is concerned. So, I speak to him on a regular basis about that as well, and I feel he has a great handle on that. But it will be the CDC, then the state, then I will go to the superintendent to find out what information he has.
Thank you. Ms. Feathering Gill?
Yes, and I agree with Mr. Goff that our superintendent is doing a wonderful job making sure that all of that information is presented to us. He does a marvelous job of sharing that currently with the school board, so I would continue to use that kind of information. Also, using the CDC and MASP also shares that kind of information. So, looking at all those different pieces and putting that all together. Obviously, I am not a medical person, so some of that, we are relying on other people to put that information out there for us, but to make sure that we're putting all of that in place to make sure that our students are getting the safest and the most effective education possible with all of that taken into consideration. So, going to the superintendent first and then going from there as he gathers all that information is the best place.
Thank you. Ms. Falconer?
Again, as has been said, the previous two candidates, definitely going to the CDC, the state website, talking with Pete Kulek, talking with the principals after they had their guidelines, making sure, before I even decided to run for school board this year, as well as I ran last year, just being very open with the administration of each school. We know that they're getting their guidelines from Pete Kulek and making sure that they understand. And then, the other thing is to talk to some of the parents. I get a lot of calls. I'm like, "I'm not even on the school board," but because I'm very involved, just making sure that you let them know, "These are some of the locations you can get that information from," and just know how to keep yourself and your children safe, teaching your children how to make sure they know how to be safe on their own.
Thank you. Ms. Pinter?
Number one, the CDC. I do a lot of talking to medical personnel, and I'm a firm believer, having COVID myself, you do not get COVID from passing somebody with a mask and gloves. You get COVID from a friend, or you get it from a relative who is in close contact with you. So, it's okay to go to school with masks and gloves and sanitation, and don't think that it's okay to go sit at a graduation with no mask and gloves and you're not going to get it. So, I tell people, every board meeting, it's not this monster that's going to reach up and grab you. It's the people you're in contact with every day. So, you have to be very self diligent on keeping yourself hands washed, you know, mask on, all that, but mainly, the CDC and Mr. Kulek has done a great job with the kids. The kids do it better than adults.
Thank you. Ms. Feathering Gill, we'll start with you on this next question. How will you bring technology to every student, and what kind of assistance will be provided?
Yes, our technology, we are working on that currently to get a one-to-one option for all of our students. And what that means is that each child will have their own device that they will be able to use. We had started that previously with our high schools, moved to the middle schools, and now with our remote learning and other options, we have moved that so that it's also now out to the elementary. We are not quite there yet, but we are looking to put Chromebooks in each, with each child. And then, the assistance that we are giving, we have implemented a couple staff members that that is their primary position, is to make sure that staff is trained on how to work with the students on that, and then also giving students options to be able to find how to use those technologies to the best of their abilities so that it works with them and is not just a computer.
Thank you. I lost track of this one. I'm sorry. Ms. Falconer, you're next.
Again, making sure that we get each child their Chromebook that they need. I know that our district is doing a great job in making sure we provide internet service or some type of internet connection for those students who don't have access, the parents don't have access. From the last meetings, we've been talking about, they're talking about getting the internet connection to some of the schools so that if the parent has to go to the parking lot to be able to use the secure website, the website in order to get the information from them. Another good thing, I know Owen Intermediate, they are having classes for the parents that they can set up for so that they can make sure that, as a parent, I need to know what my child is doing on the school property for school, because if I need to help them or just to make sure that I'm monitoring what he's doing. So, I think all of our schools should try to implement some type of program like that for the parents as we go one-on-one.
Thank you. Ms. Pinter?
Like Susan said, we have gotten more Chromebooks. Not only that, we have got internet that broadcasts into the parking lot of the high school in case you don't get a strong signal, and we have purchased like a SIM-type transferable internet that they can give to students who don't have internet, and they will be able to run their Chromebooks from that card. The name slips me, but that way that students that don't have it or don't have a strong signal will be able to do their Chromebooks, and the team that we have in there for technology has been amazing. I mean, they have taken this craziness and got it to where it's somewhat manageable. So, I think they will do fine.
Thank you. Mr. Goff?
I had the pleasure of sitting in on this past Monday's school board meeting, and so like the other member said, they have a strong plan in place to purchase more Chromebooks, so there's more than a one-to-one. We're also going to have a surplus. Also, like Ms. Pinter was saying, Mr. Garland, Sean Garland, who was the head of IT, has put out antennas, so parking lot access is available now for the internet as well. So, I think they're on the right track. I don't think that there's anything that I would do personally to implement anything else. I would just ensure that this track is maintained. They're doing a great job of what they're doing right now, and I'm very proud that we're able to, you know, sustain as far as technology is concerned in this COVID era.
Thank you. Ms. Falconer, you'll respond to this question first. What qualities do you think make a good school board member, and what is the most important responsibility of a board member?
I think the good qualities of being a good board member is being involved. First, get to know your school, your school district, get to know things on the board. I started going to the school board meetings two years ago. So, you need to be involved just to know your community and know what's needed. Be an active parent or individual within the school. Have some type of vested interest, whether you're a parent, whether you are a leader in the community, whether you own a business, because great education from our kids will give them great workers. I can't even remember the rest of the question. I'm sorry.
What is the most important responsibility of a board member?
The most important responsibility would be to make sure that you can think outside of just yourself. You have to make decisions based on the whole body. So, just because one person is maybe very well off and the others aren't, you have to make it for everyone.
Okay. Thank you. Ms. Pinter?
I think that the main thing that you have to do is try to get all the funding there for the different programs, because like Ms. Falconer said, you don't know what's going on in a child's home. When they come to school, everything seems great, and their life can be in total chaos. So, you need to be there, and I've always told parents when they've asked me, "How do you do it without?" I never overreact by what a child tells me. And I am very straightforward with kids on what my reaction is to what they've done and how I would deal with it, because I did not grow up this great school kid. I was what they would call a hellion. So, I learned, and a teacher is what pulled me up and said, "You have to straighten up because if you don't, this is the easiest thing you will ever do." And to this day, I talk to her every year and thank her for making me the person I am.
Thank you. Mr. Goff?
Well, in this position, we are fiduciaries, and so we are in a position of trust. And being in that position of trust, we have the responsibility to look out not only for the children that are in our district now, but the children that are going to be there, you know, in the future as well. And so, it's our responsibility to just make sure that what we do, we do with integrity and we do with the thought that what we're implementing has to be sustainable and is going to be for the greater good going forward. One of the great qualities, I think, of a board member is having energy. You have to have energy. When you go to the board meetings, they can be long, they can be time, but you have to have that energy. You have to know that, "Hey, this is not for me. I'm implanting something in the community that's going to make the community better. It can't be about you. It's got to be about everybody else."
Thank you. Ms. Feathering Gill?
Yes, I think one of the greatest qualities is to be able to listen, listen to other board members, listen to the community, to be able to do that as you're making your decisions. Also, gaining knowledge, doing trainings, doing those kind of things to make sure that we're gaining all the benefits that the state has to offer and that we're approaching those in the right way. And one of the greatest responsibilities of being a board member is that working as a team, that each person should not be there to look out for what they need or what they're doing, but to look at all the rest of the board members and the rest of the community, staff, students, all of that together, and pull that energy and information all together to make the best information for the kids.
Thank you. Ms. Pinter, we're back to you to respond to this question first. What more can the schools do to help students from low-income, even homeless backgrounds to achieve academic success?
I believe you have to be involved in that child's life. You have to listen. You have to help them because they're not going home and they're getting the help. There are organizations out there, but a lot of these children will not tell you that they're not eating. They won't tell you that they don't have clothes. So, a lot of the teachers, they have to, you know, will come to us or they will come to someone else and tell them, "Look, this child isn't eating," and we've actually seen principals sticking stuff in their bag because they know that's the only food they're going to get. So, I think you need to be involved with that child, and I know it's not, you know, it's in a world where you don't hug children, but for some children, that's the only hugs they get. So, you have to let them know that you think that way, but you can't do it. So, if they have any questions, that they feel comfortable to talk to you.
Thank you. Mr. Goff?
Well, I feel that counselors in schools play a huge role in that, and I think that the counselor-teacher dynamic needs to be to a point where if a teacher suspects or knows that a child is homeless or not eating or has very little clothing or things like that, that they can reach out to the counselor. So, maybe it'll take, remove the teacher from that position a little bit and have the counselor, a person who's trained to work with children like that, be the point person to try to get the child what they need, as far as clothing, food, or things like that. I think counselors need to be more active in schools than they are now.
Thank you. Ms. Feathering Gill?
Yes, one of the things is to make sure that our parents are aware of information that we have already available, like free lunches, free breakfasts, those kind of things. Currently, the state is offering that to all families, but we want to make sure that they are aware of what is already available to them. And sometimes, that's difficult to get that out there, so we want to make sure that people know what is happening. And then, also, to make sure that staff, principals, social workers, those kind of people are watching the students to see if there are those hidden issues that maybe they're not coming forward and saying, "I have a problem," but that they're watching for those kind of things to make sure that we can help them. There are different ways that we can lend a hand. I know that Owen has opened up one of their rooms for clothing and those kind of things, and to just make sure that people are aware of what we currently have to offer.
Thank you. Ms. Falconer?
I want to say that definitely at Tyler, when I began to really get involved, at Tyler, their staff does a great job of identifying those students who might be in need. So, it starts not just from our teachers and counselors, but it just starts right there with our secretaries and our custodians and our parents, because our children, they tend to attach themselves to those who they feel love them the most. So, we have to make sure our staff is prepared and have the information of different programs. I know at Tyler, we do the feedbacks at the end of the week for those students, and we make sure that we identify them where other kids don't really know that they are in need. And when I got to Tyler, we would do an angel shop. I hated angel shop only because those children who went to angel shop were the ones who could not afford it. Well, that was never my story. So, kids who had that issue then, I wanted to be like them.
Thank you. Mr. Goff, you'll respond to this next question first. What is your commitment to diversity and inclusion? Can you name a concrete action to get there?
Well, that's a tough one. I'm very committed to diversity and inclusion, first of all. As far as a concrete action plan, that's tough. I feel that teachers, parents need to talk. They need to explain to students that everyone is important, everyone is valuable, and everyone comes from a different background and have a different story. And when you do that, you start to develop empathy. When you have empathy for people, you decide, "Hey, you know what? Let me include them. Let me try to understand them." So, I think understanding is the key to inclusion and being equitable as far as people being included in things.
Thank you. Ms. Feathering Gill?
Yes, and I agree with Mr. Goff. It is kind of hard sometimes. If this was an easy question, we wouldn't have this problem, but it is. Getting out there and paying attention, talking to people, trying to make sure that you're not putting those walls up there, that there is that availability so that people can have that communication time and have options for sharing different types of information and different types of backgrounds, making sure that our staff is trained on those kind of things. And I know that's one of those things that Mr. Kudlek does make sure that he puts in place, is he wants to make sure that our staff is aware of, you know, including diversity, inclusion, making sure that all the kids and staff feel like we're all together as one team and not separated by how we look or where we think.
Thank you. Ms. Falconer?
As the previous two candidates say, definitely, this is a hard question. As the previous two candidates say, definitely this is a hard question, but we definitely want to start with communicating and educating. One thing is we want our kids to read. And when you go through the library, you don't see a lot of different books that shows our different kids, whether they're African-American, whether they're Indian, whether they're Arab, whatever their story is. So I think some of that we need to include in their classrooms. I know one of the teachers that my sons had was trying to implement different books on different cultures. So we need to be able to talk about that as well as express that to some of the parents. Some of our parents come with a chip on their shoulder, maybe because they don't know and don't trust our staff. But you can only trust them as you begin to have more communication and be open to your teacher and your principal so that you can help your student.
Thank you. Ms. Pinter?
I believe that kids all want to be loved. That's all they want to be. It doesn't matter what their color is, what their nationality, what their income is. I think they all want to come to school. They want to learn. Their minds are open. It's the older people that pollute their minds with garbage. And, you know, let's face it, we'd have to go all the way to the top and the only way we can stop the same old thoughts is to put term limits on any elected position. So that way you get new minds, new ideas all the time. I think people just need to just stop all the political and just realize these are kids. They want to learn. They want to play. They want to have fun. And they can't do that if all the barriers are always put up.
Thank you. Ms. Feathering Gill, you'll respond to this next question first. Do you think the current curriculum and books are fair and balanced? If not, what would you change?
I do think that our current curriculum is fair and balanced. I know that we have looked at several of those pieces to make sure that we're putting things in place. I'm not sure that there's much that I would change except to make sure that we're watching for any new ideas, maybe even different ways to present information, kind of like what we're having to do right now with our in-person and remote type options, those kinds of things. So we're really looking at more of how to present the curriculum as opposed to actually changing the curriculum entirely. But I think we do a good job with our curriculum department, making sure that things are kept fresh and current and so pretty happy with what we're doing.
Thank you. Ms. Falconer?
I probably, not until COVID days, I would not have said that our curriculum was bad. And I don't think it is bad. I think the problem is I have a sixth grader bringing me home math that to me makes no sense. So the curriculum is good and I think our teachers are doing a great job getting that information to our students, but our parents, so people like me, I'm like, I don't know what you're doing. Long division, for instance. Long division, I showed my son how to do it. He thought I was crazy. And then I'm pulling my hair out because I'm trying to do this new math. So when you start talking about the curriculum, I would have to do a lot of research because I didn't go into education. My master's degree is not in education. It's in business administration. So I would look towards our curriculum staff, our teachers, Mr. Kudlek and his team to bring the information that can be researched on so that they could provide that information for me.
Thank you. Ms. Pinter? Right, you need to unmute yourself.
I do know that our curriculum team works very hard on if they find that a curriculum isn't working, they change it pretty quickly. But they do do a lot of research before. Like Ms. Faulkner said, math is not like math when we were kids. It's totally different. And I have to ask for help to help my first grader, grandchild. But yeah, it's totally different. Everything is different. We do a lot of things on computers where when we went to school, only the office had them. So it's definitely something that has to be updated all the time. And not all curriculums are going to work. You can get them and they work for one student phenomenally and another student just don't get it. That's when you have the students who get it phenomenally help the other ones because kids learn better from kids.
Thank you. Mr. Goff?
Well, one of the things that has come from COVID is kind of exposed the old way of teaching. And I can say that now learning through computers, something that probably should have happened about 25 years ago. And the fact that it's happening now and we're kind of thriving at it in that area of schools, I'm proud of that. So I think that we do have a very good curriculum. I think that it's pretty balanced as well. We have robotics teams and things like that and that's good. And I just want to see more programming. And I appreciate the fact that a lot of things are technology driven. You know, learning the way we learn, sitting in the classroom and someone at the chalkboard, those days are gone. So I'm proud of the fact that we're growing with the times and we're doing a phenomenal job.
Thank you. Ms. Falconer, we'll start this next question with you. What impact do you think charter schools have had on the district?
What impact has charter schools had on the district? I think it has had somewhat of a negative impact because parents feel that if they disagree with something in our district, they're going to go to charter schools and get something better. But you're not comparing apples to apples. If you have a child who is a unique learner, who has special needs, a charter school that maybe might not have teachers who are certified or have dealt with that, they won't provide the best education or the needs that your child need at that time to be the best student, the best citizen that they'll be. So I think it's a negative effect at times because parents don't always do their research good. They listen at other people, but you have to know your child and how your individual child learns and how you're going to be involved.
Thank you. Ms. Pinter?
I think that they're very negative on the whole public school system. I think children in general, a survey was done, 70% of all children or teenagers would rather text their friends than talk to them in person. I think you need that social interaction of a school, a public school, just because when you go off to college and you're now with 5,000 other students, you're not stuck behind not knowing how to deal with all those social issues that come along with growing up. And you're not going to get that in a small class in a small school. And you have, there's enough things to fight along the way without being able to walk into that room with your head up going, I got this.
Thank you. Mr. Goff?
I think that charter schools do have a very negative impact on public school systems. As I stated before, I was a former board member of a charter school. So I saw it from the inside. And like Ms. Falconer said, a lot of teachers aren't certified the way they should be. And parents do have a really, it's a misnomer that you're going to get different, you're going to get better when you go to a charter school. Also, another issue with charter schools is options are good. But if parents were forced to stay within their school district, I think the parents would put forth more effort to be involved and to make sure that the child is getting the education that they need. When parents feel that they have options, oh, I'll just go somewhere else. I'll just go to another charter school or something like that. It pulls the parent's responsibility factor back, I feel. So that's where it has a negative impact.
Thank you. Ms. Feathering Gill?
I agree also that, sorry, my phone is ringing in the background. Sorry that the students leaving is a major issue because as the other candidates have said, that sometimes parents think, oh, it looks greener over on that side and they pull their students out, reduces the funding for the current school district. But one of the things that it does make us do is it makes us take a better look at ourselves as the school district to know what are we missing that the parents want to go someplace else? So it makes us take a look at all the programs that we're putting in place and make sure that they're appropriate for what we're doing. One of the things that I don't like about having charter schools is because they do not always have the same rules that a public school does. They don't always have to follow all the guidelines that a public, regular public school does. And having those parents involved is the key piece. Like if you're not involved in what your kids are doing, you'll never know what's happening.
Thank you. Ms. Pinter, we'll start this next question with you. What steps can the school board take to retain good quality teachers?
I think they need to work with the administration and their unions and the parents. And we all know pay is a big thing. And like Mr. Goff said before, the state should give you the same amount per student. I don't care if you're going to West Bloomfield or if you're going to Mylan or where you're going to. Every kid should have the same opportunity to learn. Just because your parents make more money doesn't mean you should get more money. I think that if every school was put on the same budget, then everybody would have a chance at quality teachers and retaining them.
Thank you. Mr. Goff?
100% agree with Ms. Pinter. She's exactly right. Also, I think that with more funding would come more programming and different programming, better programming. And that's going to attract teachers as well. It's going to, you know, teachers are going to want, you know, diverse diversity as far as teaching is concerned. You know, have the basic ELA core, you know, you have robotics. You have, you know, different classes that, you know, you're going to attract and, you know, different teachers and make it more excitable and make it so they're going to want to stay. But funding also is obviously a major key.
Thank you. Ms. Feathering Gill?
Yes, I think one of the steps that we can take is to make sure that we have a safe environment, that teachers, if they have new ideas, if they want to make changes, that they feel like they can go to administration and make those suggestions. That they also feel like they're being appreciated and that they're also given the tools that they need. So that if they feel like there's something new that's out there, that they feel that they need training on, that training is available to them. And I know that's one of the things that we do in the district is we do offer professional development for teachers. So we just want to make sure that they have those kinds of things at their fingertips so that they can draw in on it. And the biggest thing I think is to feel appreciated. So that they know that we understand what they're going through and that we value their positions and that they're dealing with our greatest asset, which is our kids.
Thank you. Ms. Falconer?
It would be a wonderful wish, I'm sure, for the teachers, if we could keep small class sizes. So both of my children are in-person learners. Both of their, neither class is larger than 14 kids. So we do know that if there's a smaller class, the teacher can, they can teach the children better because they have more interaction one-on-one with those kids and they can really cater their teaching towards that style of a learner versus having 20-something, almost 30 kids. We talked about pay and we can increase their pay. Again, making you feel appreciated for what you do, even if you're not getting the financial backing of what you're worth, but just making somebody feel that they are appreciated. They are wanted. They are honored for what they do and their knowledge goes a long way.
Thank you. Mr. Goff, we'll start this next question with you. Are non-college-bound students served as adequately as college-bound students in our schools? Why or why not?
I think that that's a place where we can strengthen. I think that all students aren't meant to go to college. And I think that we can strengthen maybe some vocational learning, a vocational center or vocational classes, things like that. So I do think that that is an underserved population in our school district. We can go a lot further if we did something like that.
Thank you. Ms. Feathering Gill?
Yes, I think that we are looking at that option, especially when we send students to Wayne Westland to the program there, that they have a diverse program of different options. And so our kids are afforded that opportunity to be able to go there. We also, through our New Tech program, give them just different ways to approach learning in general. And so that kind of gives those, either college-bound or non-college-bound kids, different types of options. So I think we do probably need to work with our counselors to make sure that we let our kids know that there are options out there besides just college and that sometimes those options of, you know, climbing up a pole for the electrical company may be something that, that's what we're going to need people doing. And we need to make sure that our counselors are sending our kids in those kinds of directions as well.
Thank you. Ms. Falconer?
I think college-bound, making our kids college-bound is great. But I think what we have to focus on is fostering or fostering that kid how they learn, what their knowledge is. As Ms. Feathering Gill just said, we need them running up electrical poles. I was telling my sons, if you think that right now, after you got out of high school, college isn't what you want to do, look until they're getting a skilled trade, being a plumber, being an electrician, because those are our skills that we need. Later you might decide, well, I might want to go to college because I want my business degree. So not only am I maybe doing the work, I can then have a business to open up to others in the community or be a teacher and teach other students. So everyone maybe is not ready to go to college at that particular point after 12th grade. But they could be ready to go later. But we want them to be able to have good jobs and be an active participant in society and give back.
Thank you. Ms. Pinter?
I believe not everyone wants to go to college. We do have a lot of programs, the NROTC, if they want to go military-bound, it gives them a little taste of it. There is the Wayne Westland program, which is phenomenal because they have said in five years, you'll spend more money for a plumber than you will a psychiatrist just because we do have so many college-bound students. And unfortunately, especially now with the pandemic, they're coming out of college and unable to get a good job, depending on what they go into. So we have programs that put them in every direction, whether it be robotics, military, building trades, college. We do the dual enrollment. So I think we're on the right path, but there's always room for improvement in anything.
Thank you. Ms. Feathering Gill, you'll start this next question first. What do you think are acceptable discipline procedures for our students in schools?
Well, I always look at this too. It always bothers me when a student is either doing something poorly or skipping school and our option is to not have them come to school. That always seems like it defeats the purpose. So I always like to look at options so that we can keep them in school and whatever we have to do to make sure that all the other students are safe. I mean, if they're doing something that's totally inappropriate, then we do have to remove them from school. And some of those things are dictated to us by the state. But I like to have some kind of option that those students can get additional help instead of just moving them to a, automatically to a suspension or some other alternative. So I think we try to look at some of those things already and, but it's always good to keep focusing on keeping them in class.
Thank you. Ms. Falconer?
We want to make sure for the discipline aspect, as much as we can, try to connect to the parent and definitely try to, we have that relationship with the student to find out what the underlying issue is for some of the discipline. Some of the, a lot of the discipline comes out because there's an underlying issue that either the student isn't comfortable with saying or they just have not found that right person. that either the student isn't comfortable with saying, or they just have not found that right person that they felt comfortable with getting it out. So I think we do have to find something that's different than, like you said, suspension or putting the kids out. Um, that's going to help them in school. Again, if it is something that's dangerous, I think we should even give them other options or other placement that we can in order to help to rehabilitate them at this age versus them going to my everyday job employer to the state jail or the federal penitentiary. So we try to handle it right now, maybe it will be better than.
Thank you. Ms. Pinter?
Um, I think we do a good job with um, you know, I, I do believe certain kids need to be suspended and taken away from other kids simply because of whether it's violence or not. But as I tell every kid when they have to come before us, you have to find someone you trust. And it, it's not that you don't trust your parent, but sometimes there's just things you don't wanna tell mom, you don't wanna tell dad. So let it be a teacher, let it be a neighbor, a pastor, uh, another teenager, somebody that you feel comfortable with. If you're being bullied, if you feel you wanna do drugs, if you feel you wanna kill yourself, talk to somebody, anybody, and if you don't want to be that person that told on somebody else, tell a teacher, let the teacher hover around and figure it out. So they're the bad guy, not you, and then you feel more comfortable. But you have to find someone in your corner at school and at home so when you don't want to.
Thank you. Mr. Goff?
I think when out, at all possible, the child should be disciplined in school unless they're obviously a danger to themselves or to staff or to other students. Um, I believe that um, like was said before, that kids are trying to get out of school in some cases. And so if you send them home, you're kinda giving them what they want. So if you can discipline them in school, find a way to find out what their underlying situation is, which was also said, and, and see what can be done in school, um talk to the parents as well. But I think discipline as far as Van Buren Schools is concerned is um pretty well, pretty, going pretty good.
Thank you. Ms. Falconer, we'll start this next one with you. What are your thoughts on police in school buildings?
When I was growing up in Detroit Public Schools, we did have a police liaison in our school who would form different clubs with us and gave us positive um talks and gave you those talks to kinda shake you up. Hey, you're not doing right. Do you want to be on the other side of, of me? Being a, being a police officer, me be, having to put you in jail. I think it's a very positive image. I know at Tyler, last year, two years ago, we had a state trooper, um Trooper Cheese. He would come in once a mon- I mean, once a week, excuse me, on his off days to, to volunteer. And when we had some of the, the young male who wanted to Ralph House, he would talk to them. They, and then he would find different things, activities for them to do to try to get that anger out. I do think it's a positive um placement if we had that, but they's gotta be structured where we can have some activity.
Thank you. Thank you. Ms. Pinter?
Um, I think it's a positive. I agree with her 100%. Um, that is a, you know, with authority, there's always someone who's gonna push that limit. But I think with the police officer there, people in general feel safer. And we're in the day and age where people will come into a school and shoot it up. And we've done everything in our power to keep that, be able to lock down instantly, even a student can do it. Because the presence of an officer just gives that, you know, don't, don't mess with us kind of thing because it's not gonna happen. And if someone feels in danger, they can go to that police officer and talk to them.
Thank you. Mr. Goff?
Uh, I think police officers in school are fine as well because kids need to know that police officers are people. And when they see an officer on a regular basis, they start to see behind the badge. They start to see the person that's underneath the uniform, which is a human being, a real person. And once they see that, they'll start to understand like, hey, this person, you know, is just like me, they have issues just like me. They smile, they laugh, and it'll be less trepidation when they come across a police officer in the future, you know, out in public or in their regular life. And I think that seeing them at school, you know, under, you know, a friendly circumstance is a lot better than seeing them, you know, the opposite. You know, in a dangerous type situation or being arrested or anything like that. So I have no problem with that at all.
Thank you. Ms. Feathering Gill?
Yes, um, I agree with the other candidates that we're talking about having that police officer there as that positive image and not there as the um guard dog at the door. That we want them to be um, show those alternative options that, hey, kids, this is, this is the way that you should be going. Um, offering those um, uh, somebody as an additional person to be able to um share and talk to um that you might not um have any other place that you can then go to that person. And by having them in the building, that creates that um sense of um relationship so that people do feel a little bit more comfortable. And I think we kind of do that at the high school with our, um, you know, having like the liaison type person. And so that makes it, um, makes it nice. So it's always good to show the police officer in that positive light so that kids can see that, that that's important for them.
Thank you. This will be our last question before we start our closing remarks. We'll begin this one with Ms. Pinter. What are your opinions on how schools are funded, public schools are funded?
Well, um, because Michigan does it sales tax and the COVID shut us down. Um, that uh puts a, puts a big thing on all of it. I think it should be straight across the board per student, whether it comes from sales tax, income tax, where it is. Everybody should get the same amount so that everybody has a fighting chance as far as teachers and supplies and curriculums. And being able to put those kids forward financially is hard to do when you're running a district and you get less because you live in a different city. I think that the state needs to just stop and give everybody across the board the same amount.
Thank you. Mr. Goff?
I believe I answered that in my opening statement. Yes, we should um be funded equitably. Yeah, every district should get the same amount across the board. I, I think it's only fair. And like um Ms. Pinter said, you wanna give the kids a fighting chance. It's about the children. It shouldn't be political. It shouldn't be about who has a bigger tax base or anything like that. It's about the students of Michigan. It should be paid, um, funded equitably so that um they can have a fighting chance.
Thank you. Ms. Feathering Gill?
There is never enough money to go around. That's always the problem. Um, but having um an equity issue is something that always is discussed. I know the state has looked at um through the couple organizations, through MSBO and, which is the Michigan School Business Officials and the Michigan Association of School Boards. That both of them have looked at having, um, where should that funding be changed? Um, part of the options are, especially if you have a large special education population, having more funding for that. The schools do receive some additional funding for special education students, students, but it's still not at 100% level as to what you're paying extra for those kind of things. So there's a lot of different places that that funding needs to be changed um for that. So the whole structure needs to be reevaluated and um hopefully we can do that soon.
Thank you. Ms. Falconer?
I do agree that the funding, it needs to change to the part, you have your haves and your have-nots. So where we're, our district, I know Tyler Elementary is a, has, is a 71% poverty. So I believe they fall into Title I. Well, if we're going to compare them, let's say, to West Bloomfield, who's not Title I, I think you need more money to come over, at least to assist in that aspect. And if we have more special ed or whatever, it is, almost needs to be categorized in where your needs are. Everyone doesn't need the same of everything. So if they have low poverty to no poverty, that, that's not where they would need more funding in that area. They would need, it would, it wouldn't work, it wouldn't be a necessity for them. It would give them an overflow where our kids, where we do have the lower poverty, we're still at sort of a disadvantage.
Thank you all for responding to those challenging questions. We're going to do our two-minute closing statements and we'll do this in reverse order than um from our opening one. So Ms. Falconer, um, if you could start us off by giving your two-minute closing statement.
Okay, so my passion for wanting to be a member on the school board came from me growing up and watching my parents, who both have full-time jobs, but still being very active in our education life with our teachers and in our school. And as a parent, it's my responsibility to make sure that I provide every, every open-door aspect for my children as well as any of the children who they have called friends and in our village that they're growing up in. When their friend is not together, then they're not together. So we need everybody, all of our children to be on one accord and to be equal because it's a, it's a benefit for the community as they grow up and they would want to give back. I am a part of my, the education team for my children, not just the parents. So when you have my children, you have me on, on your team. Whether I'm the CEO, the CFO, or whatever you wanna call me. My specialty is not education, but you're gonna help me provide enough information to, to be able to make a decision and make a good educational decision for my children. So I do know that together we can make a difference in our lives, with our students, our families and our educators, if we all really try to work together in order, or for the betterment of our children. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Feathering Gill?
Yes, um, I would like to thank the League of Women Voters for giving us this opportunity to participate in this candidate's forum. This is a nice way to be able to share the information and um wonderful questions that you had for all of us. And you're right, some of them were very challenging. Um, but it is uh nice to be able to share, especially during the current pandemic. It's um difficult to be able to just speak into the screen and not be able to see faces out there. So that's the most challenging part of being able to do this kind of thing. But as our current Vice President of the Van Buren Public Schools, I would like to continue to keep our um communication lines open between the board, the community and the staff. I know that's one of those things that I've mentioned a couple times with our different questions, that without that communication piece, that is um something that makes things fall apart when you don't have that proper communication. So I would like to make sure that we continue to do that. Um, and my goal is for the Van Buren Public Schools to continue to be a successful educational system for all of our kids. Um, especially during this time of when we're trying to educate in two different um options, doing our in-person and our remote learning, that we continue to bring out the best in our kids, give them everything that we possibly can, make sure that our um staff is fully trained. And then to continue on that, as we add in that last question, to continue working to get the state to fund all of our school districts appropriately and um so that we have the money available to do the things that we need to do. So all of those things would be a um great option. So, and I'd just like to thank everybody for um watching and making um all of this available for all of us so we can do the best for our kids.
Thank you. Mr. Goff?
First of all, I'd like to thank the League of Women Voters for having this forum and giving us a platform where we, as candidates, can talk to the community to let them know our hearts, basically. Um, I would like to be on the school board because I have a heart for children. I have a heart for the future. And I believe that you have to put some skin in the game if you really want the future to succeed. You can't sit on the sidelines and talk about and point fingers about what should be happening if you're not gonna get involved. And I'm that type of person. I'm going to get involved because I wanna see the future do well. And so I'm willing to, I work a four-time job and have three daughters and a wife and a dog. But I'm still willing to invest in our community because I love this community. I love children and I wanna see our children prosper. And so I just hope that I can earn the vote and trust of the people of our community that I'm gonna do the right thing. I just really hope I can earn your vote and your trust. And thank you. I appreciate you.
Thank you. And Ms. Pinter?
Um, I'd like to continue on the board simply because the district wasn't quite turmoil when we took over. And I think as a team, we put it in the right direction. And of course, COVID's trying to derail us. Um, I was raised by a dad who was divorced with three little kids and he worked 45 miles away. So we didn't have him home and he worked 16 to 18 hours a day as much as he possibly could because men didn't get child support. So my grandmother, who took care of us, didn't speak English, so she couldn't help us in school and she didn't drive. So now when kids see me, and I've been married 39 years in the district, my kids are around, but I let kids know. Been there, done it, been grounded for it and probably got my butt whipped for it. So anything you're gonna do, just come to us. If you need help with it, we're there to help you because not everybody lives that perfect life and they can't. So we are working for those children to try to keep them in a positive direction to let them know it's not where you came from, it's where you're gonna go. And that's what they need to know, that they can go wherever they wanna go.
Thank you. We thank the candidates who are running for the office and appreciate your willingness to serve in the public service capacity. And thank you to the voters in Van Buren School District who are surely tuning into this forum after it has been recorded to learn about their choices on November 3rd. All of these candidates were also invited to participate in the League of Women Voters Voter Guide, a publication that anyone can access online by going to vote411.org. By typing in your voting address, you can access all the races on your ballot, verify your voting registration status and find your polling place. That's vote411.org. And a print copy of the voter guide, which looks like this, will be available in the public libraries um this weekend or the first week in October. Election Day is November 3rd. If you're not registered to vote, you can do so up through Election Day. Registration 10 days prior to Election Day must be done at the office of your city or township clerk. Unlike the primary election, voters may choose candidates from any party when filling out their ballot. But of course, the school board candidates are on the backside of the ballot, the nonpartisan side. Polls are open from 7:00 AM to 8:00 PM, but all registered voters can vote early by absentee ballot. Remember that you must first fill out and, and return an absentee ballot application to your city or township clerk before they will mail you a ballot. If you need an absentee ballot application, contact your city or township clerk. This concludes our forum for this evening. Thank you again for your participation and good luck on November 3rd.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Good night.
Good night.
Thank you.